Hello, I'm David Reese, the Chair of the Rent Guidelines Board, and I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing. This is the first of four public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the rent stabilization law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Christina DeRose.
Present.
Robert Ehrlich.
Present.
Shayla Garcia.
Present.
Christian Gonzalez Rivera.
Present.
Arpit Gupta.
Present.
Alex Schwartz.
Present.
Christina Smith.
Present.
Adan Soltran.
Present.
David Reese, present. Let the record show, we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a virtual public hearing this Wednesday, June 8th. This will be our last virtual public hearing to comment on the proposed guidelines. However, we will also be conducting in-person public hearings on June 13th and June 15th. The details for attending these hearings can be found in the meeting schedule on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or by calling 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. You can also pre-register to speak at the in-person hearings on our website, or by calling 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Pre-registration for the June 13th hearing will end at 12:00 p.m. on June 10th, and for the June 15th meeting at 12:00 p.m. on June 14th. Each of these hearings will also be streamed live on our YouTube channel. To find out how to watch, visit the RGV website, nyc.gov/rgb, or call the RGV at 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. We will also be taking comments on the proposed guidelines outside of our public hearings. This testimony must be submitted no later than Thursday, June 16th. You can find information on submitting testimony on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or you can leave audio testimony by calling 929-256-5472. The final vote will take place on Tuesday, June 21st, starting at 7:30 p.m. at the Great Hall at Cooper Union, which is located at 77th Street at the corner of Third Avenue in Manhattan. The public may attend in person or may watch the vote live by streaming it on RGV's YouTube channel. To find out how, visit the RGV website, nyc.gov/rgb, or call the RGV at 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. I'd like to thank you all for attending this public hearing. The board is looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Before we proceed with testimony, I'd like to go over the rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the board. We will begin with speakers who registered in advance. We will alternate between tenants, owners, and public officials with a speaking limit of two minutes per person. If there is time at the end of the hearing, we will then hear from unregistered speakers on a first-come, first-served basis. We will explain how to do that after all registered speakers have spoken. When it is your turn to speak, a staff member will promote you from an attendee to a panelist, and you will have the ability to speak and display your video if you so choose. Please wait for your name to be announced before you commence your testimony. If you are attending the Zoom hearing with a name or phone number that differs from the name or phone number you registered with, we will not be able to identify you, and you may lose your place in the queue. If you are not an attendee of the hearing at the time your name is called, you will also lose your place in the queue. A two-minute timer will begin and will be displayed periodically during your testimony. At the conclusion of your testimony, you will become an attendee again without speaking privileges as we move on to our next speaker. There is a Spanish interpreter here today. To listen to testimony in Spanish, please use the interpretation button in Zoom to choose the appropriate channel. For English speakers, select the English channel to hear English speakers as well as Spanish speakers interpreted into English. If you do not choose an interpretation channel, you will hear all testimony in the native language of the speaker. If you're using the Zoom app on a smartphone, you may find the interpretation button by pressing the "more" button. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time we have for this year. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to join us and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. We thank you for your cooperation.
All right, I just got a text message that the sign-ups for Wednesday's hearings have already been closed. Is that true, Andrew?
Excuse me, Alvin? Excuse me, aren't you supposed to be in the main channel? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was only in the English channel.
You're in the English, you should be in the main channel. Right, that's what we want from this, so I'm sorry.
So he can be assigned as an interpreter in order to do that piece.
Okay.
The one who gets assigned.
Should I remove Alvin? Alvin, put him in the main, yes. I'm sorry. Okay, it's updated. Are you able to hear me? Yes, wonderful, okay. Me gustaría darle la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública de la junta de normas del alquiler de Nueva York. Esta es la primera de las cuatro audiencias públicas que tomarán en consideración sus comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler de apartamentos, lofts, o altillos, hoteles, y otras unidades de vivienda sujetos a la ley de estabilización de alquileres de 1969, y la ley de urgencia de protección de inquilinos de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán la renovación de contratos de alquiler a partir del 1er de octubre de 2022 hasta el 30 de septiembre de 2023. Ahora pasaré lista. Por favor, responda si está presente. Christina DeRose, presente. Robert Ehrlich, presente. Shayla Garcia, presente. Christian Gonzalez Rivera, presente. Arpit Gupta, presente. Alex Schwartz, presente. Christina Smith, presente. Adan Soltran, presente. And David Reese, present. Que conste en actas que existe un quorum. La próxima reunión de esta junta será una audiencia pública virtual este miércoles 8 de junio. Esta será nuestra última audiencia pública virtual para comentar sobre las normas propuestas. Sin embargo, también realizaremos audiencias públicas en persona el 13 y 15 de junio, respectivamente. Los detalles para asistir a estas audiencias se pueden encontrar en el calendario de reuniones en nuestro sitio web, nyc.gov/rgb, o al llamar al 212-669-7480 entre las 9:00 de la mañana y 5:00 de la tarde. Usted también podrá inscribirse por adelantado para hablar en persona en estas audiencias en nuestro sitio web, o al llamar al 212-669-7480 entre las 9:00 de la mañana y 5:00 de la tarde. La pre-inscripción para la audiencia del 13 de junio finalizará a las 12 del mediodía del 10 de junio, y para la reunión del 15 de junio a las 12 del mediodía el 14 de junio. Cada una de estas audiencias también se transmitirá en vivo en nuestro canal de YouTube. Si desea saber cómo sintonizarnos, visite el sitio web de la junta, rgb, nuevamente, nyc.gov/rgb, o llame a la junta, rgb, al 212-669-7480 entre las 9:00 de la mañana y 5:00 de la tarde. También aceptaremos comentarios sobre las normas propuestas fuera del horario de nuestras audiencias públicas. Este testimonio debe presentarse a más tardar el jueves 16 de junio. Encontrará datos sobre cómo presentar su testimonio en nuestro sitio web, ny.c.gov/rgb, o puede dejar un testimonio en forma de audio al llamar al 929-256-5472. La votación final tendrá lugar el martes 21 de junio a partir de las 7:30 de la noche en the Great Hall at Cooper Union, ubicado en el 7-Este de la calle 7, en la esquina de la Tercera Avenida. El público podrá asistir en persona o ver la votación en vivo, que será transmitida en el canal de YouTube de la junta. Para saber más al respecto, visite el sitio web de la junta, rgb, nuevamente, nyc.gov/rgb, o llame a la junta, rgb, al 212-669-7480 entre las 9:00 de la mañana y 5:00 de la tarde. Me gustaría agradecerles a todos por asistir a esta audiencia pública. La junta desea verdaderamente escuchar sus opiniones sobre los ajustes propuestos a las normas de alquiler. Antes de continuar con sus declaraciones, me gustaría repasar las leyes y procedimientos para los que deseen declarar ante la junta. Empezaremos con los hablantes que se inscribieron por adelantado. Alternaremos entre inquilinos, propietarios, y funcionarios públicos, y cada persona dispondrá de dos minutos para declarar. Si hay tiempo al final de la audiencia, escucharemos a los hablantes no inscritos por orden de llegada. Explicaremos cómo hacerlo después de que todos los hablantes inscritos hayan hablado. Cuando sea su turno de hablar, un miembro del personal lo cambiará de participante a panelista, y así podrá hablar y mostrar su video si así lo desea. Espera que se anuncie su nombre antes de empezar con su testimonio. Si aparece en la audiencia de Zoom con un nombre o número de teléfono diferente al nombre o número con el que se inscribió, no podremos identificarle, y es posible que pierda su lugar en la fila. Si no es participante de la audiencia en el momento en que se llame su nombre, también perderá su lugar en la fila. Se usará un reloj para marcar los dos minutos, y se mostrará de vez en cuando durante su declaración. Una vez concluido su testimonio, dejará de ser panelista y volverá a ser participante, sin privilegios de hablar. Y después pasaremos a nuestro próximo hablante. Hoy contamos con intérpretes españoles. Para escuchar un testimonio en español, use el botón de interpretación en Zoom para elegir el canal adecuado. Para los hablantes de inglés, elige el canal en inglés para escuchar tanto a los hablantes de inglés como a los hispanohablantes interpretados al inglés. Si no elige un canal de interpretación, escuchará todo el testimonio en el idioma nativo del hablante. Si está utilizando la aplicación Zoom en un teléfono inteligente, puede encontrar el botón de interpretación al presionar el botón "more," M-O-R-E, que significa "más." Una vez ahí dentro, encontrará la opción para interpretación. Esperamos que haya muchos hablantes, y la junta desea escuchar a tantos de ellos como sea posible en el tiempo limitado que tenemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que desea que escuchemos en tan solo dos minutos. Sin embargo, le pedimos que comprenda que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos de que todos los que se hayan tomado el tiempo de acudir a esta audiencia hoy a declarar tengan una oportunidad de hacer oír sus voces. Les damos las gracias por su participación. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Alvin. You're most welcome. Okay, we're gonna start promoting our first speaker. We're promoting to a panelist. And that person is Anne Greenberg. Hello, Anne. You're muted, and your camera's not on if you want to turn it on.
I am trying to turn my camera on. Okay, there we go. It had to recycle itself, you know?
Welcome.
Thank you. Just before I get started, I just want to apologize in advance. There's some construction work going on above me, and you may hear it.
No worries.
Anyway, I'm ready to start.
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Anne Greenberg. I live in Peter Cooper Village, and I'm on the board of the Stuyvesant Town Peter Cooper Village Tenants Association. Tenants need you to prevent, quote, "unjust, unreasonable, and oppressive rents," end quote. In year three of COVID, how is 6% just? Who got a 6% salary increase? Whose small business is doing 6% better? Even 2% is too much for too many seniors like me on fixed incomes and low-paid essential workers. We're not the only ones who need a freeze or a rollback. About 6,200 of my community's units have high-preferential rents. My landlord and no doubt others have already given themselves increases way above your proposals. They warehoused apartments during COVID, then jacked up the preferential rents as the market heated up. I estimate 10 to 18% in my community. For preferential renters, even a small percentage can be a budget-busting dollar increase. Owners have long been advantaged, as attorney Tim Collins testified. The effects of excessive guidelines 2009 to 2014, quote, "continue to overcompensate owners and unnecessarily burden tenants," end quote. A shocking percentage of households pay 30%, even 50% or more of income to rent. And you know that rent-stabilized housing is profitable. Owners kept buying even during a pandemic. Yes, NOI went down this year, but only the second time in 30 years. Why should tenants be hit with an increase that will compound to compensate for one lean year? When costs went down, rents were at rollback. Then there's the bonanza of MCIs, which amortize in 12 or 12 and a half years, but owners collect for 30. Rent hikes are a recipe for more evictions, more homelessness, more bad health and education outcomes, and more financial and emotional stress. Just don't do it. And I want to say thank you to you for hearing this, and to my council member Keith Powers for making this happen.
Thank you, Anne.
You're welcome.
So our next presenter will be Joanna Wong. Joanna, I see Joanna coming in now. Hi, Joanna.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, just let me know when I should start.
As soon as you're ready.
Sure. Like many other owners, my parents were immigrants. They didn't speak English. With the little money they saved from working on jobs and their work ethic and grit, they were able to self-operate and have been providing housing to the neighborhood for the last several decades. But it's been increasingly difficult to continue. For the last decade, operating expenses have ballooned nowhere close to the RGV increases. Prior to 2019, there was at least a chance to try to catch up with expenses. But now, the RGV increases are really the only way that we can try to keep up with expenses. If you took a dollar of rent in 2012 and compounded it by the RGV increases, that dollar would be $1.13. Now, let's look at our largest operating expense for private housing providers, which is real estate taxes. In the same 10-year period for us, that $1 of real estate taxes in 2012, now it's $2.80. That's almost three times the amount compared to the 13% rent-stabilized increases. This is not sustainable, even at a 4% increase. Now, real estate taxes is not the only expense ballooning. It's just the most appalling. I hope the other owners will talk about the other expenses that we're facing. You know, our priority and most owners' priority is to make sure that we can maintain the building on a long-term basis and provide what we need to provide. You know, and if private housing providers are not able to sustain and maintain their buildings, then not only will owners lose, but everyone will lose. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Susan Steinberg. Hi, Susan. I don't see you. In case you wanted to turn on your camera, and also you just got muted. Oh, there, I see you, and let's see if we can hear.
Hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm ready to begin.
Great.
I'm Susan Steinberg. I live in Stuyvesant Town in Peter Cooper Village, a rent-regulated community of 11,242 units. Rents here are skyrocketing by double digits. In July 2021, a one-bedroom apartment in Stuyvesant Town rented for $3,284 a month. Less than a year later, May 2022, a one-bedroom rented for $4,475 a month, an increase of $1,191 or 36.26%. Meanwhile, a pandemic and inflation have wiped out incomes, wiped out savings, and resulted in evictions for thousands of renters. The only ones who are not wiped out are landlords who've been excessively compensated for decades. Timothy Collins, seven-year executive director and counsel to the RGV, presented data at your April 26, 2022 hearing demonstrating that landlords have been steadily making about 40 cents on the dollar for decades. In fact, the RGV staff reported that from 1990 through 2020, average net operating incomes rose 47% after adjusting for inflation. Wouldn't it be great if tenants saw the same rise in their incomes? Small landlords, the only ones who appear before the RGV to testify, claim an inability to maintain their buildings without a significant RGV increase. But they no longer represent the typical landlord. Articles appearing in The New York Times, The New York Post, and Forbes describe how corporate landlords now dominate New York's residential real estate, viewing rent-stabilized properties as a smart, risk-adjusted, long-term investment opportunity. Corporate landlords don't need any RGV increase to stay profitable, and small landlords can apply for a hardship increase. The RGV is mandated to establish rent adjustments, not maintain owners' profits. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Leslie Leon.
I seem to have some problem with my video, so can you hear me?
Yes, Leslie, we can hear you. If you just want to speak with that video, that's totally fine.
Yeah, apparently I have to because my video is not working. Thank you for the opportunity. Even before PIAAC was completed, the facts have been clear for the past two years. Inflation has been at levels we haven't seen for decades. I see when I go to the grocery store, the gas station where I pay my Con Ed bill. The PIAAC for 2022 indicates the cost for buildings have gone up 4.2%. And that's based on data that's a year old. That doesn't factor the galloping inflation that continues through 2022 with little sign of abating. In fact, your PIAAC projections for this year is 4.7%. This assumes a decrease in fuel costs, which, under current conditions, seems like wishful thinking. Most puzzling in the 2022 PIAAC is the convenient decline in taxes, the most influential component of building costs. Despite what the Department of Finance figures show, I don't know of any building that has a lower tax bill. This is all to say that I encourage the board to do something that has not been done under previous administration. Look at your own data. It may be good short-term politics to underfund the New York housing stock, but it does nothing to maintain the existing aging housing stock in New York City. You can't really expect the small landlord to keep sinking money into buildings that are over 100 years old. There's no secret to what happens when you don't maintain buildings. Look no further than what the city has done with this NYCHA housing. If the city can't work the miracle of maintenance without funding, how can it expect the small landlord to do it? Recently passed New York housing laws, which discourages investment in buildings or causing regulated housing to deteriorate at an accelerated pace. They punish any investment in upgrading old units by imposing ridiculous limits on the amount that can be spent on bringing all apartments up to current code to make them rentable. They do nothing to encourage the only thing that brings rents down: more supply. What passes as housing policy has been pass the buck to the landlord and score points with the tenant advocates. True housing advocacy is creating more housing, not destroying existing supplies. I ask that this board don't keep trying to rewrite the laws of economics. Face the facts. Follow your own data. Help preserve our badly deteriorating affordable housing stock. Pass increases of 4.5% to 9%, as indicated by your own CPI-adjusted NOI commensurate adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Michael Murray. Hi, Michael. We don't see you, and you're muted.
Is that better?
Yep, we see you, and we can hear you.
I'd like to try to share my screen if I can.
We're not offering that, I'm afraid, for.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, then why don't we just start? Hi, Michael Murray. I expect my wife and I are much like thousands upon thousands of other tenants in rent-stabilized housing. I'm 65, my wife is 72. We live on fixed incomes. I suffer from chronic lung disease that requires life-saving medicine that's usually expensive, and I have to take it every day. With the cost of basic necessities, medical care, and other things skyrocketing, any increase at all in rent is an absolute hardship. And I suspect it's not just true for people on fixed incomes like myself, but also for the many thousands upon thousands of young families trying to raise children. In my neighborhood, the price of a half a gallon of milk recently jumped from $2.29 a half gallon to over $3.50 a half gallon virtually overnight. Now, I'd like to address some of the many faulty and misleading analyses that have been presented in prior hearings. First, there's been discussion of audited and unaudited data, with their suggestion being that the unaudited data makes rent-stabilized housing look less profitable than the audited data, and the truth lying in between somewhere. Well, the fact is, the unaudited data, if unaudited means what it means in every other context, the unaudited data is completely unreliable and should be disregarded entirely. There's no way to know that the corrected unaudible data would be somewhere between unaudited and the audited data now. The unaudited data might actually, if audited, show that the housing stock is even more profitable. I don't.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Cal Dorfman.
He's not in attendance.
Okay.
Next speaker will be Harrison Marks.
Harrison Marks is our next speaker.
No, I had actually promoted Howard Chin.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're gonna go with Howard.
Howard, yep.
Howard, I'm sorry. Howard, welcome.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Howard.
Okay, my name is Howard Chin, and I own a property building here in Lower Manhattan. And what I like the RGV to consider is this. I don't consider myself a big landlord, meaning that I own lots of units, right? I'm a mom-and-pop landlord with 26 apartments, okay? And I want you to consider following. Look at anyone that owns a house, or some you may actually own a house. The cost of maintaining a house includes property tax, water and sewer, utilities, insurance, repairs, and maintenance, and fuel, which is number two oil, okay? In my case, a property building, right? You look at the price of gasoline, and so you do own cars, right? More than doubled in the last six months or so. It's the same with number two oil, right? So when my expenses go up double digits, and you want to give a property owner on like a 2% increase, that's not going to cover my operating cost. You look at the past two years during the pandemic. Landlords were required to give a rent concession, some of them as much as 30% less rent. Some don't give a free month rent, either one month or two-month rent. Then some of them, that's have to pay brokerage fee too. All that factors into our operating expense. So with that, I had to borrow money just to meet my operating debt, right? So as you consider, you know, the rent keys, I don't know how a 2% increase will cover, you know, double-digit inflation costs. I don't know how a 2% increase will cover, you know, double-digit inflation costs. So please, you deliberate, take this into consideration where, you know, costs affect everyone. Inflation affects landlords of us tenants, but please, don't just, you know, look at the tenant side because we have many more costs to factor in. Consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. And we have Harrison Marks next. Harrison, you're muted. There you go.
Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon. My name is Harrison Marks. I live on West 21st Street in a market-rate rental unit with my wife and our nine-month-old son. And I've come to speak on behalf of my neighbors in Chelsea, Hell's Kitchen, and the Upper West Side, including young families and retired individuals on fixed incomes who depend on rent stabilization. I've had the privilege of speaking with thousands of neighbors over the last few months, and time and again, I've heard similar stories of despair. The economic impact of the pandemic is still being felt in every sector of our economy. And we're testifying over Zoom for one reason, which is that the pandemic continues. And with the most robust pandemic assistance programs gone, my neighbors are still digging out of holes that they dug while burning through savings or racking up debt to cover costs while they were out of work. The proposed 2% to 4% increases for one-year leases and 4% to 6% increases for two-year leases would be devastating for my neighbors who've been scraping by and cutting expenses to make rent every month. A rent increase, no matter how small, may be the last straw for my struggling neighbors. So the Rent Guidelines Board should adopt a rent freeze, as it has done in the past, or at the very least, ensure that increases are kept to an absolute minimum. My neighbors love their homes and want to stay in New York City. A rent increase may make that impossible. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, I believe, is Dutch de Carvalho.
Actually, it's Stephanie.
Okay, I'm sorry. Our next speaker is Stephanie Langell. I hope I got Langell right. Hi, Stephanie. I think we'll be able to hear you. If you want to turn on your camera, feel free.
Thanks. I've got it off. I'll just go with my speech if that's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And have you pronounced your last name? Is it Langell or Langill or?
Langell is fine. Langell. Thank you. I appreciate that. Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Langell, and I'm a small property owner. I'd like to start by saying rent increases are justified and necessary. You, the Rent Guidelines Board, already recognize that an increase is warranted by proposing these increases. Therefore, we implore you to please grant increases of 6% for one year and 8% for two years. Please recognize that the increases ranges that you, the RGB, proposed are not only well below your own data's recommended ranges, but are far below what is necessary for building owners to continue providing adequate living conditions. Data you choose to use shows that this year's price index of operating costs increased again by 4.2%. Additionally, according to the RGB data, owner-net operating income decreased by an astounding 7.8%, the second decrease in the last three years and the second-largest decrease in the history of the RGB. For eight years under the de Blasio administration, owners suffered three rent freezes and increases that averaged less than 1% a year. Those numbers are unsustainable if you want us to provide livable, clean, safe, and functioning buildings. Owners have been and will continue to feel the negative effect of HSTPA, the detrimental effects of COVID relief for the tenants, and now we're facing rising costs due to inflation, alarming increases in heating costs, and the DEP is proposing an almost 5% increase in water costs, the highest in 10 years. Yet unemployment continues to drop, tenant economic conditions continue to greatly improve, New York City continues to add thousands of jobs, and wages have increased. We and I speak on behalf of other small property owners care about providing good housing and about our tenants individually, but it's not our responsibility to subsidize them. Why should we have to dig into our own pockets to pay our expenses? Please, we implore you to hear us and not ignore our real and true arguments. Approve rent increases of 6% and 8% for one- to two-year leases. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Dutch de Carvalho.
Yep, that's right.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Dutch de Carvalho, and I'm a 25-year-old lifelong New Yorker who lives in a rent-stabilized, low-income housing tax credit apartment. And I'm asking that the Rent Guidelines Board vote no on the currently proposed rent increases, and more specifically, to reject any and all rent increases. The data I'm going to be using today comes from the Community Service Society of New York's Unheard Third Survey. As I mentioned, I live in a low-income housing tax credit apartment in a building which is a part of the 421A Tax Abatement Program. Many apartments in this program, including my unit and all of the units in my building, are also subject to a guaranteed 2.2% rent increase in addition to any rent increases approved by the RGB. That means with the proposed guidelines, many of us could see rent increases as high as 8%. At a time when at least 40% of low-income rent-stabilized tenants have lost income and at least 52% are rent burdened, a hike of that rate is simply unconscionable and will lead directly to an increase in evictions, the gentrification, and displacement of hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers. As a young adult, I have seen this gentrification and displacement happening in my own neighborhood for years, and it has only been accelerated with the pandemic. Raising rents on the 365,000 low-income households that live in rent-stabilized housing will only continue to force us out of our homes and gentrify our neighborhoods. With the ending of the eviction moratorium and the many pandemic support programs earlier this year, along with the over 227,000 eviction filings in housing court, it is clear that us rent-stabilized tenants are at an incredibly high risk for eviction. Millions of dollars have been promised for housing vouchers, assistance programs, and protections for tenants, none of which have happened. And while I am very clear on the fact that the RGB is not responsible for this legislation, you can do something. By voting no on any rent increases, you can help to prevent the potential evictions of hundreds of thousands of low-income New Yorkers. In closing, I ask that as you make the decision, you think of the very real New Yorkers who are represented in your reports and research. The families, the elderly, the immigrants, the working class, the young adults trying to remain in the city they love and grow, the New Yorkers who make this city what it is. You have great power in making this decision, and I hope that you choose us, the people of New York. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker...
I just want to say, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think Liz, who was interpreting, I believe, got demoted for some unexplained reason to attendees, so the Spanish interpretation may not have continued properly. I am trying to, I see Elizabeth as a panelist, and I'm unable to promote her. I mean, I see her as an attendee but unable to promote her as panelist.
Would it make sense for us to take a break and let her sign out?
I can switch, actually. I think Alvin's going to take over now, so.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I'm not sure why that happened. So I'll make Alvin the interpreter.
All right. Brian, should Liz sign in and sign back, sign out and sign back in so she maybe will be a panelist?
I can do that.
She's rejoined.
Oh, she joined us. There she is.
There was a delay in her rejoining us. I don't know what happened, Liz.
I don't know. I was just interpreting when, because he was speaking, so I didn't click "join as panelist," but I'm here now. I hope you guys can hear me.
Yes, we can, Liz.
Okay, thanks. No problem.
Our next speaker is Monique Dana. Sorry for the confusion, Monique, but please testify as soon as you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Monique, and I'm a small property owner. My family has built and supports our business with sweat equity and by making sacrifices. We need rent increases of 6% for a one-year lease and 8% for a two-year lease to help cover our increasing operating expenses. The RGB report, RGB 2022 PIOC, was up 4.2%, but that doesn't include real estate taxes. My real estate taxes are 52% of my total expenses, 52%. So I don't know how you cannot include them as part of the expense increases. In 2021, my net operating income went down 24%. I'm a small property owner, not a big corporate landlord. My expenses increased significantly. My building utilities were up 26%, water and sewer 126%, insurance 26%, and that's with lower levels of coverage because I couldn't afford my old coverage. My real estate taxes were up 7.99%. They're limited to 8% increase. Those don't include labor, maintenance, administrative, and many other costs. My highest-paying rent-stabilized tenant lives in 10% of my building, yet his annual rent covers only 5.3% of total expenses. Property owners are the only small business continually being asked to subsidize their customers. The increases proposed ensure deterioration in the affordable housing stock as owners will not have the necessary funds to maintain their housing in a desirable living condition. We implore you to pass increases of 6% and 8% for one- and two-year leases. And if the board believes that housing needs to be subsidized, it should be the city or the federal government supporting tenants, not small property owners. As Chairman Reese said, the rent increases enacted by RGB are the only sources of income that rent-stabilized owners have to cover increasing costs since HSTPA. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm just waiting for our next up. Our next speaker is Roberto Rodriguez. Roberto, I think you should be able to speak, but we can't see you if you want to turn your camera on. Roberto, I'm not here.
Yes, can you hear me now? And my camera is on.
Okay, we don't see you, so if you want to just speak, that's fine. Or if you want to try to figure out how to get your camera so that we can see it.
I can speak from Time Factor. Good afternoon. My name is Roberto Rodriguez, and I am a retired rent-stabilized tenant living in North Brooklyn. I am speaking on behalf of Losures Lucha en Uno. I hope that before you take the final vote in June, you think of the thousands of tenants evicted, adding thousands to the already homeless on the streets. Think about the gun violence, the people waiting for hours, including myself, at food distribution sites throughout the community because we need to make ends meet to pay the rent. This is our daily reality. Do not let yourselves be deceived by the predatory landlords with their talk of NOIs and data-driven testimony. Do not put the wants of the wealthy property owners over the needs of the tenants. How can these property owners say they are losing money when thousands of apartments are off the market or warehouse for profit? These landlords hide in LLCs while my friends and neighbors are receiving eviction notice in bulk for entire buildings throughout the city. Our legislators were afraid to pass good cause in Albany. Our schools have more students in shelters than ever before. Our right to counsel is disappearing day by day. So like Confucius, when is it obvious that the goals are not attainable? Do not adjust the goals, adjust the action steps. This is why I urge this Rent Guideline Board to stand up for tenants. Justice. Stop property owner greed and protect hard-working tenants. Act now. Roll back the rent to 0% for one-year lease and 0% for two-year lease. Once again, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to promote. Ah, great. I think it's Faceli Alvarez. Did I get your name right?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thanks.
You can start when you would like.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Faceli Alvarez y soy miembro de este camino de Nueva York.
Good afternoon. I'm Faceli Alvarez, and I'm a member of Make the Road New York.
vivo en Bushui desde el 2006 y estoy aquí testificando el día de hoy porque esto me lo quiero que la junta tome la decisión del impacto muy fuerte en nuestra vida.
I'm sorry. Am I interpreting simultaneously or?
Can Liz get a sign?
Yes.
Okay.
So Liz, you should be, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. It was confusion. I'll make her the Spanish-English.
Okay, thank you.
Right now. Just hold on for a second.
Sure. Señora, disculpe un momento, por favor, okay? Dame un segundito.
Okay, I'm updating now.
Okay.
I think we said.
¿Estás lista en la línea de español?
Sheila, oh. I can't hear you, Sheila. Sheila, you're muted.
I was just checking if Liz was already in the Spanish. Like, can we test it? Facelis.
Yeah, you're on the Spanish channel.
Sheila, for some reason, your volume is muted. Which room are you in?
I am in the normal room because I understand both languages. So folks should hear me in whatever language I...
Andrew, I can't hear Sheila. Can you?
She's on the Spanish station. I can hear Sheila, and I'm on the regular station.
You have to put the English for people, since I turned on Spanish to English, you have to put on English as your interpretation now.
Mine is on English, Brian.
Okay.
But I still can't really hear Sheila.
Sorry, I'm confused. I'm not on any language. I speak both languages, so I don't have to turn on an option.
Oh, Sheila, can you hear? I'm sorry. Sheila's in the main room. I'm sorry. So Sheila, you can't, you're not able to choose either Spanish or English?
Yeah, there's a... No, I shouldn't have to. Yeah. Because I understand both.
Right, right. Got it. Okay. But that's why David couldn't hear you because you're in the main channel. David's in English.
He should hear me when I'm speaking English in the main channel.
I hear you now, but I didn't hear you previously.
I don't know. That's odd.
Okay, now, yeah, now we can both, we can hear you now. That was odd. Okay. All right.
Ms. Alvarez, I apologize for our technological snafus. Do you want to start from the beginning and just give us your whole testimony in one piece?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if anybody's...
Ms. Alvarez, you can start when you would like.
Did anyone hear?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Faceli Alvarez.
Sheila, you didn't hear Liz speak in Spanish?
I did not.
All right, Brian.
Something is not labeled correctly, which is why we're missing some people.
All right, just to clarify. So Alvin is assigned to translate from English to Spanish.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Faceli Alvarez. Soy miembro de este camino de Nueva York. Vivo en Bushui desde el 2006. Estoy hoy aquí testificando el día de hoy porque la decisión que tome la RGB podría tener un impacto muy fuerte en mi vida. Si se incrementa la renta, tendría un efecto devastador para miles de familias que vivimos de cheque a cheque, especialmente después del COVID-19. Los apartamentos restabilizados son la única opción para muchas familias por poder quedarnos en nuestra ciudad y que tenemos una vida estable y con dignidad. Puedes saber... pues sabemos que si la protección que nos da la estabilización hay desplazamiento, incremento sin medida de precio, dependemos de la junta acá presente para que tome decisiones buenas y le pedimos que no haya incremento en la renta, al contrario. Pedimos que se baje la renta, pedimos un rollback. Los estragos de la pandemia siguen afectando a muchos inquilinos, incluyendo familiares míos. Todavía la gente está pasando un momento difícil y el incrementar estos ritmos aún más del 2% hasta el posible 6% sería de un plazo para miles de familias. Nuestro sueldo no sube y no hemos salido de la pandemia. En mi hogar pagamos el 50% de nuestros ingresos y me hace estar en la categoría de tener carga de alquiler pues pagamos el 30% de ingreso. Y la verdad, estamos poco más de no poder sustentar este precio de renta. Aunque por ahora se plantea... aunque por ahora se plantea destabilizar mi familia, pues posiblemente no tendríamos que mudar de nuestro sector. Tengo dos niños de 10 y 12 años que han vivido toda su vida en este sector, en el vecindario de Bushui, en donde van a la escuela. Y tenemos que mudarnos y cambiarnos de escuela y desplazarnos por todo el incremento que ha habido. Quiero que conozcan muchos casos de mi vecino que dejaron el vecindario cuando nuevos dueños compraron y cambiaron. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Stephanie Pear. Stephanie, I think you should be able to speak, and now we can see you as well. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm ready.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Stephanie, and I was born and raised in Brooklyn. For the past seven years, I've witnessed my neighborhood be destroyed by gentrification and the arrival of transplants. I've witnessed rents, specifically in marginalized neighborhoods, increase at an insane amount, to the point of being unlivable for us native Brooklynites. An, a median one-bedroom in Flatbush is currently 2,200 per month, which means that the average person has to earn 80,000 a year. I'm a case manager. I work for Crime Victim Services. That is social work. And I do not earn near that. I don't know anybody that earns near that amount. To think that increasing the rents for stabilized units, which has been such a safe haven for us native New Yorkers, to 6% or 8% is going to be so harmful for our community that are already going through evictions and the shelters are already inundated with eviction clients and homelessness. Even after a pandemic that has affected everybody financially, mentally and emotionally, and has had devastating effects, you think that a vote to increase rents will be helpful for anyone? You witness how the transplants and these gentrifiers just up and left during the pandemic, leaving so many apartments vacant. Who filled them and who helped the landlords pay their rent? We did. Not the transplants and not these gentrifiers that landlords have been appeasing to for the past decade. We stayed. We're the ones that are going to continue to be here for our community. But with these increases, I don't know how that's going to happen. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Guy Edwab. Did I get your name right, Guy?
You did. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for the opportunity to testify today. I'm with the League of Independent Theater, a volunteer organization for those who work in or operate theaters and other cultural groups within the city. These are small businesses that put 1.3 billion in economic output for the city. And the workers in our industry were among the hardest hit. Our industry was first to shut down and the last to reopen. According to the New York State Department of Labor, between March of 2020 and April of 2020, employment in our sector dropped 60%. Among artists, it dropped by 69%. While the popular perception is that these disruptions are over, I'm here to tell you that they remain persistent for the lowest-wage arts and cultural workers. For example, during January's Omicron surge, the unemployment rate in arts and culture again doubled. These disruptions not only cancel shows but keep audiences out of theaters and music halls, driving down revenue and artist wages. Artists who book themselves, like musicians, take on huge financial risk, shouldering the cost of travel and accommodation that are lost when gigs are canceled. With all this turmoil, we in the arts community are still looking to get back to where we were in 2019. We're not even thinking about yet a healthier, more vibrant tomorrow. As such, we believe it's premature to increase residential rents on those most vulnerable in our community who rely on the protections of this guideline board to be able to continue living in New York. We note that the continuing disruption to the tourism and recreation industry is acknowledged by the board in its proposal to hold hotels, lodging houses and rooming houses at the same levels. The same logic applies to residential apartments that house New York's, one of New York's largest industry, arts, entertainment and recreation workers. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, Andrew, I know that Sheila's having some technical difficulties. I don't know if anyone else is. And all right, Andrew, let me, let's just see if.
Yeah, I, I noticed that she at one point got to an attendee. Is she back with us?
She's, she's trying to rejoin now.
Okay. Give her a second here.
Sheila's coming back now, yeah?
Yeah, she's coming back now.
Hey Sheila, we see you now. I don't know what happened.
Great. I don't know.
Yeah, that was odd.
Zoom.
So the folks who pre-registered, we've gone through the folks who have shown up so far. So at this point, I think if it's okay with our chairs to open up the floor for folks who would like to speak, is that okay?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, so I'm going to explain how to do that. It's one of the interpreters. After I make announcement number six, it's on the random announcements. If you could do that in the main room and let people know as well how you can join or if you want to speak rather. So for those who didn't have a chance to register in advance, we have some time remaining for additional testimony. If you would like to testify, please raise your hand to signal your wish to speak. If you're on a desktop computer, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls or press Alt plus Y on Windows or Option Y on Mac. On a smartphone, tap Raise Hand in the webinar controls. For those joining by telephone, simply press star nine and then star nine to lower your hand after you've spoken. When you're called on, you remember you will just have two minutes to speak for your testimony.
Andrew, just one other clarification. If you've spoken already, you will not be given a second chance to speak. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So if someone can interpret that for the main channel?
Para aquellos que no tuvieron la oportunidad de inscribirse con anticipación, nos queda algo de tiempo para testimonios adicionales. Si desea declarar, levante la mano para señalar su deseo de hablar. En una computadora, haga clic en Raise Hand o Levantar la Mano en los controles del seminario web o presione Alt más Y en Windows u Option más Y en una Mac. En un teléfono inteligente smartphone, pulse Raise Hand o Levantar la Mano en los controles del seminario web. Para aquellos que nos acompañen por teléfono, presionen estrella nueve para subir la mano. Presionen estrella nueve nuevamente para bajar la mano. Cuando se le llame, recuerde limitar su testimonio a un máximo de dos minutos.
So currently, we do not have any raised hands.
If you've testified previously, you will not be called upon if you raise your hand. Andrew, should we take a break? And, and yeah, Alex?
Yeah, just I took, I take the opportunity. Someone had mentioned in the testimony statement of preferential rent, and I just want to clarify that under the H S T P A, as I understand it now, that preferential rents cannot, are not subject to additional increase while tenant is in occupancy. In other words, the R G B increase is based on whatever the rent is, whether it's a preferential rent or not. It's only when there's a change in occupancy that the landlord can raise the rent to the maximum allowable amount. That's my understanding, but I thought it might be helpful to reiterate that because I think one of the people who testified indicated that landlords are raising rents beyond that maximum amount that's currently allowed.
I, I, I could have heard the testimony wrong, Alex, but I think she was referring to warehousing units.
Oh.
And then re-renting them.
Okay.
Because once they're vacated, then they.
They go up higher.
Legal amount, right?
Okay.
They were waiting till the pandemic ends so the market would, would bounce back up. I believe that's what she was referring to.
All right, thank you.
Um, so this is to the, to the board and to Andrew. I guess we have two choices. We could, we could take a break and if other people want to come and testify after the break, we could do that. We could end the meeting.
Well, I, can I jump in there, David? I'm sorry. There are some people who signed up who have yet to showed up.
Okay, so we need to.
We want them to have an opportunity to come because they did pre-register.
Okay.
So right now, that's four different people. We know one is not showing up that originally signed up. That person switched to Wednesday, so we know for sure. But there are four people who have said they had signed up or rather they have signed up to register and haven't come to join us yet. So I think taking a break is an option at this point.
Andrew, do you have a suggestion? Should we do a 15-minute break?
Yeah, I guess that's fine. 15 minutes works, I guess, for folks. Is that all right?
Yes, so I mean, I'm just going to suggest you, you mute your cameras, mute your sound and turn off your cameras and we'll reconvene at 3:20?
All right, I just wanted to make sure that like folks listening understand that like if you did get a preferential rent during COVID, that is now your legal rent and that is what the adjustments by this board will be based on. I just want to make sure that that's understood, that like, yeah, folks moving in and that transition. But if your landlord decrease your rent for whatever reason for your unit, that becomes your legal rent moving forward and that's what R G B rental increases will be based on.
Thanks, Sheila.
All right, so we'll reconvene at 3:20.
Okay, I think we're going to put up a clock, right, Brian? Countdown?
Yes. Okay, so we, uh, are back after our break. Andrew, I do see we have, uh, one person who hasn't spoken before.
Yep. Um, uh, we could wait a few minutes to see if folks, make sure everyone comes back on. Or 30 seconds. Are we ready?
David, just while we wait, I just wanted to, like, highlight that I did not get any text messages from folks. So if there is someone on this call who is working with an organizer and is trying to figure out how to testify during this hearing, you can reach out to the organizer or folks can reach out to me directly. Um, and I can, like, support if I can, in any way.
Thanks, Jo. Um, should we start with our next speaker?
Um, sure.
Okay, um, so our next speaker, uh, and Andrew, I think you'll, you'll promote her to panelist, is Lydia Shostapalova. Hi, Lydia, um, you're muted and we can't see you if you want your camera on.
Hi, um, let me see.
Hi, Lydia.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, so please forgive me for, uh, kind of the the off-the-cuff nature of, of my testimony.
No worries.
I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to speak. I was watching, um, but it seems like an invitation to do so, so I appreciate you hearing me out. Um.
Thank you for taking the invitation.
Um, I am, uh, and please forgive me for getting emotional because this is, housing is real. And getting it torn out from under you is all the more real, and I think that an in- increase in rent that is so dramatic at this time, um, will, uh, impact not just me personally and my mother, who is newly retired and living on an income that is just at the poverty line. Um, uh, and facing the potential increase, I'm unemployed at the moment and I'm about to run out my unemployment clock. So will no longer be having any income, um, and so facing a potential, um, uh, increase that is so huge, um, is definitely putting, uh, thousands of New Yorker, tens of thousands of New Yorkers, um, on a, on a line, on a basic road, uh, to more debt, um, more hunger, because some will cut back on how much they spend on food. Um, and more instability. People looking to save money in any way possible, um, possibly looking to, uh, forestall some kind of eviction or getting thrown out by just couch surfing or moving around, uh, getting out before they're kicked out. And ultimately more evictions, which we know target people who are already, um, suffering. Um, unemployed people, underemployed people, um, black and brown renters, um, aging people, retired people, uh, immigrant communities, I mean, I can, I can go on. And I think that the increases in rent, while I...
Do you wanna, Lydia, do you want to just finish up and, and?
Yeah, so I, I, I have sympathy for the small, uh, uh, te- um, uh, o- owners, uh, building owners, but they also have resources to turn to, whereas individual tenants do not. Um, so instead of appeasing the market by kind of kicking the responsibility to the next lowest run, um, I think that the city and other resource, other entities need to be called to order to pick up the slack and help, uh, regular people out.
Thank, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for, for having me.
Andrew, looks like we have Assemblymember Epstein, a former member of the Rent Guidelines Board. Assemblymember Epstein, uh, I think we can hear you, but we can't see you if you wanna be, um, on camera. Oh, we can't hear you either. Hi, Harvey.
Oh.
Uh, you're, you're muted.
I'm sorry, before he's, before Harvey speaks, I just wanna remind people that if you, if we have any Spanish speakers, uh, they have, make sure you set your interpretation channel to English.
David, is it okay now, or?
Uh, Brian, can we proceed?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, yes, uh, Assemblymember, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having me, and, uh, I really appreciate you adding a couple more hearings on, 'cause I know it's important to get the public to, to speak to about this really critical issue. Again, my name is Harvey Epstein. I'm a State Assembly Member representing the 74th Assembly District. Really appreciate everyone's time on the Rent Guidelines Board. For some of you know that I was a tenant representative on the Rent Guidelines Board for five years, and I know the work that you're doing. Um, five, I think five years ago, for five years, um, the, the work that you're doing is really critical to, to preserving decent affordable housing in our state, where we have over a million rent-stabilized apartments and 2.5 million rent-stabilized tenants, and you know, I really wanna urge the Rent Guidelines Board to set a rent freeze, uh, for the one- and two-year leases or the lowest possible increase. As you all know, uh, over the last two years, we've set an emergency rental assistance program called ERAP, as well as a landlord rental assistance program called LRAP, where we allocated to, at $2.7 billion in 2021 and another $1.1 billion in 2022. However, um, even though we had set almost $4 billion in funding, only 150,000 out of the 330,000 applicants were able to leave assistance. That means 55% of the households who applied were eligible for any of this state rental assistance. And you know, uh, according to your own study, income and expense study, the operating costs for property owners fell between 2019 and 20. Rent-stabilized tenants have a lower median income than other rental tenants, you know, is 50, 44,000 versus 54,000 than the rest of the rental market. Well, most of the state, there's a lot of recovery. We see, uh, their recovery is slower in New York City, especially in rent-stabilized tenants. Cities recovery, you know, we still have a 6.5% unemployment versus the national average of 3.6. So as we continue to, to move out of this pandemic, um, the cost of affordability is critical, and there's something that the state can control. You know, it's, to think about property owners and their interests versus tenants and their interest, we have to think about who's at the higher risk, and the reality is that those tenants are vulnerable. A 1% increase will mean more people will be evicted, a 2% increase means even more. And your obligation and my obligation as a State Assembly Member is to ensure that we balance the interests of property owners and tenants, and I critically believe it's who's us all in this moment where we see, you know, 90,000 homeless people in New York State, 60,000 alone in New York City, to think about the impact that our work has. Our goal is to maintain property owners and their ability to raise money, as well as the ability of tenants to be able to stay in homes that they care about. We don't want people who are, you know, who are not paying the rent to continue to live there unless they get government assistance. But at the same time, we don't want people who, who can skirt by now to be forced out of their home with a 1% or 2% increase, knowing there are programs available to assist, uh, property owners as well. So again, along with 30 of my colleagues, we'll be sending a letter to you, asking you to do a rent freeze or at least the lowest possible increase. And these are 30 Assembly Members across the city of New York, representing every borough, who care deeply about, uh, what we're talking about here. Um, it is critical that you heed our warning, hear, hear our concerns, because it's not just me, it's my colleagues all across the city. And thank you for letting me testify here, and again, thank you for all your work, and I look forward to seeing a vote at the end of the month, uh, a freeze or the lowest possible increase.
Thank you, Assemblymember.
And, and David, if there's a question, I'm happy to answer it, but if there isn't...
Sure, um, Harvey, since we have you on, there's been so much discussion about the rent laws and the impact of those rent laws and NOI dipping a little bit. Um, is that something that the legislature assume would happen? What is your response as to, as a person who is, you know, writing these legislations, but also as a person who saw this data and understands it in a different way? Um, as so like how we as a board should be looking at data of NOI decreasing on a year where I, I assumed was, it was gonna happen, right? Like these last few years, zeros, um, and then the rent laws, like, changing.
Yeah, I think there's two things. One is, I mean, the, the issues of net operating income. We, I think we had a 14-year gain in net operating income that Rent Guidelines were able to track, so it's rare that in any industry you see 14 years of straight profit. So especially during a pandemic where people were struggling and like before the pandemic, it's logical to see a bit of a dip, but that doesn't mean that property owners on the whole aren't doing well, especially since you see the foreclosure rates are still extremely low, um, and you see the, the property conditions that are not substantially getting worse than we've seen over the years. So I think that's part of the fluctuations in the market. But we also see, on the flip side of the, the tenants are continuing to struggle even more. We see more tenants continuing to have, uh, rent, take up higher percentages of their income. 40% of tenants, 50% of their income or more are being put towards rent. So it's just this balancing of equities, and what we tried to do in 2019 when we passed the HSTPA was to look at places where we could protect, uh, tenants' rights by looking at, uh, 1/40th or 1/60th improvements or individual apartment improvements, as well as figuring out how we can do better caps on MCIs, and also looking at reasonable customary cost structures for major capital improvements. So a lot of those things, as well as not allowing property owners to have units come out of rent regulation, was to protect, protect the housing stock, protect the tenants, but to ensure that owners, especially property owners, could do well. But also ensure that the hardship program that continues to exist, that property owners, if they did have real hardship, they could have access to that program as well. Hope that answers your question.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Assemblymember.
Thank you all, and thank you for all this work that you're doing.
So David, um, I think we'll just announce how people can join if they wanna, uh, or how they can participate, um, since they haven't signed up to register. So I'm gonna lea- uh, read that announcement again and, uh, see if anyone who's joined us recently would like to, like to testify, so for those who didn't have a chance to register in advance, we have some time remaining for additional testimony. If you'd like to testify, please raise your hand to signal your wish to speak. On a desktop computer, click Raise Hand in the Webinar controls, or press Alt-Y on Windows, or Option-Y on a Mac. On a smartphone, tap Raise Hand in the Webinar controls. For those joining by telephone, press Star 9 to raise your hand, and to lower your hand, press Star 9 again. When you are called on, uh, you will, please remember, you have two minutes for your testimony.
Para aquellos que no tuvieron la oportunidad de inscribirse con anticipación, nos queda algo de tiempo para testimonios adicionales. Si desea declarar, levante la mano para señalar su deseo de hablar. En una computadora, haga clic en Raise Hand o Levantar la Mano en los controles del seminario web o presione ALT más la, la tecla Y en Windows u opción más y la tecla Y en un Mac. En un teléfono inteligente, pulse Raise Hand o Levantar, Levantar la Mano en los controles del seminario web. Para aquellos que nos acompañan por teléfono, presionen estrella nueve para subir la mano, presionen estrella nueve nuevamente para bajar la mano. Cuando se le llame, recuerde limitar su testimonio a un máximo de dos minutos.
I haven't gotten any special requests, David, so.
Thanks, yeah.
I follow you.
Okay. Andrew, I mean, what, what is your sense about the, the, the couple of people who signed up but who have not showed up?
Yeah, I mean, we can give them a bit more time by taking another break. I, I know maybe, I don't know if members have, if they can hang on. But I suggest maybe taking a break to four to give them an opportunity and then we'll reconvene at four. Does that make sense, David, to give them at least a little more time to join us?
Sure, let, let's do that. And then, and yeah, let's do that, Andrew. That makes sense.
Okay.
All right. So everyone, feel free to turn off your cameras and your, your audio.
Andrew, and I'll, I'll go on my end and see if there's any wranglers who didn't for some reason or weren't able to, but I'll text you if I find any.
I, I would just like to, to mention to the board members, if we do lose some over the next break, that we have many more speakers for Wednesday than we did this afternoon. So we're up to, you know, close to 90 registered speakers. So this will not be occurring on Wednesday. It will be more, more like our.
No one wanted to sign up for Monday, Andrew.
They should have.
The, the other thing is.
This was their opportunity.
We also took a pretty afternoon to give people who are in a different work.
Yeah, that was totally the point was to give people who have odd schedules the opportunity to join. So yeah, so we, we suspect that it will go much more like it did last year for those who were with us last year.
I'll see you in 20 minutes.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, welcome back to Okay, welcome back to everyone who's participating in today's hearing. Andrew, do you want to take it away? everyone who's participating in today's hearing. Andrew, do you want to take it away?
Yeah, sure. So there were, and we mentioned four people that we didn't know whether they were going to appear or not. Yeah, sure. So there were, and we mentioned four people that we didn't know whether they were going to appear or not. One of them has since joined us will be promoted shortly. One of them has since joined us, will be promoted shortly. The other folks we had reached out to, they are not coming. So we confirm that. The other folks we had reached out to, they are not coming. So we confirm that. And so I, you know, we will have accounted for everyone on our And so I, you know, we will have accounted for everyone on our folks who had pre-registered and signed up, which is what we're legally obligated to do. So folks who had pre-registered and signed up, which is what we're legally obligated to do. So I'm going to, I think we'll promote this one person, give them an opportunity to testify, then we'll open it up again to the floor I'm going to, I think we'll promote this one person, give them an opportunity to testify, then we'll open it up again to the floor for people can raise their hands. for people can raise their hands. And then we will, we will go from there and see if we have any other folks. I see there are some new folks who have joined us. So. And then we will, we will go from there and see if we have any other folks. I see there are some new folks who have joined us. So.
Yeah. So if any of the attendees are planning on speaking, feel free to raise your hands now, but we'll first hear from the pre-registered person. Is that right, Andrew? Yeah. So if any of the attendees are planning on speaking, feel free to raise your hands now, but we'll first hear from the pre-registered person. Is that right, Andrew?
Correct. And that's going to be Sam Schreiber. I see that you're there. So I'm going to, we're going to promote you to a panelist at this point. Correct. And that's going to be Sam Schreiber. I see that you're there. So I'm going to, we're going to promote you to a panelist at this point.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome, Sam. Please feel free to testify as soon as you're ready. Welcome, Sam. Please feel free to testify as soon as you're ready.
Thank you. Yes, sorry for joining late. Thank you. Yes, sorry for joining late. I actually testified last year and I actually testified last year and this year I decided to look back at some headlines from the rent guideline board meetings over the last 30 years. this year I decided to look back at some headlines from the rent guideline board meetings over the last 30 years. And it seems like the messages are always the same. Owners say increases are too low and tenants say And it seems like the messages are always the same. Owners say increases are too low and tenants say the increases are too high. And so the increases are too high. And so you know, over time, our family owns a number of properties in New York and you know, over time, our family owns a number of properties in New York and like many owners, we have struggled with expense increases, primarily property taxes. like many owners, we have struggled with expense increases, primarily property taxes. I went back and I analyzed the last six years of average property tax increases across our portfolio and they average eight to 10% I went back and I analyzed the last six years of average property tax increases across our portfolio and they average eight to 10% year over year. And we no longer reinvest in our properties. We no longer have the funds to do so. year over year. And we no longer reinvest in our properties. We no longer have the funds to do so. And for the first time in 60 years, we're thinking about selling our properties because they're diminishing return assets. And for the first time in 60 years, we're thinking about selling our properties because they're diminishing return assets. We have good relationships with all of our tenants. I know everyone by name. I can We have good relationships with all of our tenants. I know everyone by name. I can some of our longer term tenants, I can say what apartments they live in and I know their families, some of our longer term tenants, I can say what apartments they live in and I know their families, but it's become very difficult to survive in New York. And I just want to give you one example and I, I say this respectfully, but I think but it's become very difficult to survive in New York. And I just want to give you one example and I say this respectfully, but I think the rent guidelines board has some blame in terms of how high rents have gotten. the rent guidelines board has some blame in terms of how high rents have gotten. We have a property, a couple of properties where we have 50% free market apartments, 50% rent stabilized apartments. We have a property, a couple of properties where we have 50% free market apartments, 50% rent stabilized apartments. I would be very happy to raise rents 2%. We have good paying tenants. I want them to stay and be here long term. I would be very happy to raise rents 2%. We have good paying tenants. I want them to stay and be here long term. But when we have half of the building paying essentially 0%, and I look at 1% is essentially zero when you, when you take 1% on such a low basis of a rent number. But when we have half of the building paying essentially 0%, and I look at 1% is essentially zero when you, when you take 1% on such a low basis of a rent number. We're forced to raise the rents on the free market apartments substantially more, more so than I want and I feel for the tenants, but. We're forced to raise the rents on the free market apartments substantially more, more so than I want and I feel for the tenants, but.
Just feel free to finish up, Sam. Just feel free to finish up, Sam.
It has nothing to do with profits. It's just because of increased expenses. We are forced to increase rents 8, 10%. It has nothing to do with profits. It's just because of increased expenses. We are forced to increase rents 8, 10%. And it's just going to compound and then rents become too high and then stronger legislation gets passed. We need some sustained And it's just going to compound and then rents become too high and then stronger legislation gets passed. We need some sustained increases year over year to really help us survive. increases year over year to really help us survive.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right. I'm now looking at the attendee list and does anybody want to raise their hand? Any of our new attendees want to speak? All right. I'm now looking at the attendee list and does anybody want to raise their hand? Any of our new attendees want to speak?
David, I can, I can reread our announcements so they understand how to raise the hand. So David, I can, I can reread our announcements so they understand how to raise the hand. So on a desktop computer, you click raised hand in the webinar controls on a desktop computer, you click raised hand in the webinar controls or press Alt Y on Windows or Option Y on a Mac. or press Alt Y on Windows or Option Y on a Mac. If you're joining us by a smartphone, tap raise hand in the webinar controls. If you're joining us by a smartphone, tap raise hand in the webinar controls. And for those joining by telephone, actually I don't see any, but those showing for telephone, if you may be listening, press pound nine to raise your hand and then And for those joining by telephone, actually I don't see any, but those showing for telephone, if you may be listening, press pound nine to raise your hand and then pound nine again to lower your hand. pound nine again to lower your hand. And you will have again two minutes to speak. So if someone, if one of the interpreters could translate that. And you will have again two minutes to speak. So if someone, if one of the interpreters could translate that.
In a una computadora, si usted tiene computadora, haga clic en lo que es raise hand o levantar la mano en los controles del seminario web. Or, en una computadora, si usted tiene computadora, haga clic en lo que es raise hand o levantar la mano en los controles del seminario web. O presione la tecla ALT más la tecla de la Y en Windows u opción más la tecla Y en una Mac. O presione la tecla ALT más la tecla de la Y en Windows u opción más la tecla Y en una Mac. En un teléfono inteligente, pulse raise hand o levantar la mano en los controles del seminario web. En un teléfono inteligente, pulse raise hand o levantar la mano en los controles del seminario web. Para aquellos que nos acompañen por teléfono, por favor, presionen estrella nueve para subir la mano Para aquellos que nos acompañen por teléfono, por favor, presionen estrella nueve para subir la mano y después presionen estrella nueve nuevamente para bajar la mano. y después presionen estrella nueve nuevamente para bajar la mano. Cuando se le llame, recuerde limitar su testimonio a un máximo de dos minutos. Gracias. Cuando se le llame, recuerde limitar su testimonio a un máximo de dos minutos. Gracias.
Okay, I see no hands being raised. Okay, I see no hands being raised. Um, we fulfilled our legal duty because we've kind of touched base with everyone who's Um, we fulfilled our legal duty because we've kind of touched base with everyone who's pre-registered. So I could entertain a motion to adjourn and free up the last hour for pre-registered. So I could entertain a motion to adjourn and free up the last hour for whatever else people have going on in their lives. whatever else people have going on in their lives.
Wait, we did get someone to raise their hand. Wait, we did get someone to raise their hand.
Oh, oh, wait, saved by the bell. I see Spencer Garcia. If we could promote Spencer Garcia to a panelist, we can hear from Spencer Oh, oh, wait, saved by the bell. I see Spencer Garcia. If we could promote Spencer Garcia to a panelist, we can hear from Spencer for Spencer's testimony. for Spencer's testimony.
Hi, my name is Spencer. I just want to clarify, this is not for me to testify because I am registered for Wednesday. Hi, my name is Spencer. I just want to clarify, this is not for me to testify because I am registered for Wednesday. But just to ask if you could keep the room open to five, just in case, you know, folks are planning on coming at 4:30, 4:45 But just to ask if you could keep the room open to five, just in case, you know, folks are planning on coming at 4:30, 4:45 and are not yet in the room. That's my only ask. and are not yet in the room. That's my only ask.
Thank you for your, for your contribution. Thank you for your, for your contribution. I, you know, I'm, I'm board members. I, you know, I'm, I'm board members. I'm very okay. I mean, I'm very okay. I mean, let me, let me ask the question to the board. let me, let me ask the question to the board. Does, do people want to stay till five? And I mean, or not, I guess that's the question. Does, do people want to stay till five? And I mean, or not, I guess that's the question.
Do David, do you need a quorum to keep it open? Do David, do you need a quorum to keep it open?
As long as we don't, as long as we don't. As long as we don't, as long as we don't. So once, once a meeting has, has, has been called into, into session, So once, once a meeting has, has, has been called into, into session, we don't need to check the quorum unless a member asks to check the quorum. And so it kind of exists unless it's challenged. we don't need to check the quorum unless a member asks to check the quorum. And so it kind of exists unless it's challenged.
As for me, I'm fine staying on. I mean, it's like, I'll just go off camera and wait for somebody to As for me, I'm fine staying on. I mean, it's like, I'll just go off camera and wait for somebody to to raise their hand and pipe up. to raise their hand and pipe up.
Yeah, I'm with Christian. I can stay until five and just, I just need like somebody to say something so I can look at the screen. Yeah, I'm with Christian. I can stay until five and just, I just need like somebody to say something so I can look at the screen.
Okay. All right. So, so Okay. All right. So, so I guess we'll just stay on. And yeah, I think people should feel comfortable either turning off their, their cameras or they should I guess we'll just stay on. And yeah, I think people should feel comfortable either turning off their, their cameras or they should leave their cameras on, but just remember you're on camera, which is sometimes hard to do when you're not paying attention. leave their cameras on, but just remember you're on camera, which is sometimes hard to do when you're not paying attention. Okay. So let's, let's, let's wait and see if anyone else shows up. Okay. So let's, let's, let's wait and see if anyone else shows up.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
David.
Hey Andrew.
Yeah, so we have someone.
Oh great.
Yeah, with someone who had pre-registered and was on in the beginning and then was bumped out somehow. So she called in.
Okay, great.
So I'm going to promote her. Her name is Anne Perryman.
Okay.
So yeah, Anne, you have the, we've given you access, permission to speak, but you're on mute.
What are instructions on the phone to unmute?
I think it's star six.
So Anne, if you could press star six, then you should, we should be able to hear you. And we still can't hear you. So for us to hear you, you have to press star six on your phone.
Is there a chance that needs me to translate it?
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, and we can't hear you. You need to press star six.
Yeah, she's actually an English speaker. We've already spoken to her.
All right, and just so you know, we can't hear you. Shayla, do you have a sense of maybe she's affiliated to an organization or?
I'm still here.
I have her on email and she said she's pressed star six many times and it's not working. And we're going to try to send you another email so you can come in and video. So just hang tight and we'll try to get to you in a minute. Okay?
Thanks, Danielle.
Was your, David, your question? No, I have not had any person being like, I didn't get to get on. Everyone is like, I signed up for Wednesday.
Okay. Wednesday it is. Wednesday is the big day.
I can't believe that. Am I unmuted?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Oh my goodness.
Loud and clear.
Okay, I've got two minutes here. Can you take it?
Yep, we're ready for you. Please start as soon as.
Okay, thank you. I'm Anne Perryman. I represent 200 rent stabilized tenants at Lincoln Towers, which is now a string of eight co-op buildings along West End Avenue on the Upper West Side. As a group, we are mostly retirees. We've enjoyed careers as teachers, artists, writers, musicians, librarians, technicians. We've worked in public health and education and theater and the performing arts and retail. We rented our apartments in the 1970s and 80s and we have played an important role in our community. During the bad old days for New York City, we were here, working, raising our families, supporting public schools, the art cultural institutions and stores. We continue to serve as volunteers in our parks, churches, mosques, synagogues, senior centers and community organizations. We want to live out our lives here in the city we love, the city we have supported and served. But it's not easy. Growing old is not for sissies. That's true. Many of us have lost an income producing spouse. Many of us are living on social security. If it happens, our landlord is a highly profitable real estate corporation. Our members rely on rent stabilization. In your deliberations, we encourage you to consider the large retirement community of New Yorkers in rent stabilized apartments. Say no to those huge increases. Keep the rent increases as low as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. So we have about six minutes left and so I guess we'll stick out till five. If anybody else wants to raise their hand who hasn't spoken yet in the attendees, feel free. And otherwise people should feel comfortable to turn off their cameras until we hear from anyone else. hear from anyone else. Okay, Andrew, I'm looking at the list of attendees. I don't see any new ones. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, it's five o'clock on the dot. Andrew, anything else you would like to add before I call for a motion to adjourn?
And I have nothing really, just there is an email going around for your food order for the in-person. So.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, we do. Oh, yeah, that's right. We have folks who haven't done that. So it's all individual orders. They'll all be wrapped separately. So just take a look and please review it. It's very basic what we're doing, but because they're evening hearings, we will provide.
All right, let me just say thank you to Charmaine and to Danielle and Brian and Andrew, as well as to Liz and Alvin and Cesar for helping make this successful and helping make Wednesday successful. And thanks to all the board members for your patience today. And I will see you all after the motion to adjourn. I will see you all on Wednesday. But can I, can I have a motion to adjourn? Christina DeRose made a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
A second.
Was that a Don?
Yeah, that's me.
A second for a Don. Thank you all, and I will talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.